All right, I'm bringing this meeting to order. Sergeants, please, everyone who's disrupting the meeting after my order, remove them from this council chambers. Sit down immediately.
So we have started the meeting.
Sit down and be silent immediately. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfeld, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hug, Krikorian, Lee, McOscar, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski.
Thank you.
Eleven members present in the corner, Mr. President.
Thank you. The two people standing in the aisle are ordered removed from this meeting for violating Rule 12. Please get them out right away so we can start the meeting. So is the man who's standing up and waving his hands. You're ordered removed pursuant to Rule 12. Have a nice day.
So the gentleman in the black cap has been ordered removed from this meeting along with the gentleman in the appears to be red pants and the black mesh shirt.
So is the woman in the white jacket and so is the man standing on the aisle with the black shirt. Get out of our meeting so the people can have their council actually be able to function and have a meeting. We have three people literally delaying the work of the city council and it won't be tolerated. So as, as, so for everyone who's here, members of the public who are here trying to participate in our council meeting, no disruptions of any nature will be tolerated in this council chambers. If you disrupt this meeting by shouting out, holding things up to distract the council members, blocking the view of people behind you, or otherwise, you will be removed from the council chambers. Have a nice day. For the record, we are still waiting for these three people, three people, out of the four million people of Los Angeles, three people are chanting something that is causing this council not to be able to meet. So please get them out. Have a nice day. Thank you, sergeants. To the real members of the public who are here, I apologize for that delay. It's something that we have to deal with sometimes in the city council, so I apologize for the delay. All right, we will go next to the presentations portion of our meeting. And again, let me just say before we do, I want to apologize to the members of the public for the disruption that we had earlier. Sometimes we have that here in council meetings. These are public meetings. People can come and sometimes even in violation of our rules, express their viewpoints, but we will do our very best to try to maintain decorum and order as we're proceeding with these presentations. So I'd like to invite Councilmember Blumenfeld, Councilmember Jaroslawski, and Councilmember Park.
The word Shoah translates from Hebrew into English as calamity. And no matter your heritage, Jew or otherwise, the systematic murder of six million Jews and five million more, political dissidents, POWs, Slavs, Gypsies, homosexuals, mentally ill, it's a calamity whose horror speaks to all manners of humanity across the world. We remain committed as ever to ensuring that such atrocities are never again committed.
Part of this recommitment means not just uplifting the values of inclusivity, but ensuring that future generations of Angelinos and people all over the world do not forget what happened. While we've seen a troubling rise in antisemitism, hate, and Holocaust denialism, we must ensure that even as we have fewer and fewer survivors still among us, that we keep their experiences and messages alive and that we shall never forget. I'm proud to stand with the Jewish community and I will always work hard alongside my colleagues in office in our Civil and Human Rights Department and the LAPD to ensure that there is no place for hate in Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
At such a challenging time right now for all of us, it becomes even more critical to draw upon our experience to find the courage and resilience we need right now. The Holocaust wasn't just a moment in our history. It was and continues to be a dire warning of what happens when hatred goes unchecked and when we turn away from each other's humanity. And yet there remains a really shocking lack of knowledge about the Holocaust, especially among our younger generation. According to a poll by The Economist this past December, 20% of people between the ages of 18 and 29 believe the Holocaust was a myth, and another 30% said they didn't know. That's 50% of young people. That should signal alarm bells for all of us in a world of so much misinformation, misinformation we're seeing right now in a really heightened intense way. It's up to all of us to ensure that the memory of those who were murdered endures and that the lessons of the Holocaust aren't forgotten. And that's why the work of the Holocaust Museum LA is so important right now, especially right now.
The slogan should be "Never Again" to anyone, anywhere.
Thank you so much, Henry, for sharing.
Councilmember Jaroslawski, I'm sorry, before you begin, I'm just going to remind the people in the audience again, there will be no disruptions of this presentation whatsoever. Councilmember Jaroslawski.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank you, Henry, for being here and for sharing your story over and over and over again. It's so important that all of us know about what happened so that it can help inform what we do going forward.
And thank you especially for the reminder about the prevalence of misinformation in our society today. It seems that much of the TikTok generation thinks that anything that happened before 1990 is ancient history. And it's very easy to lose the lessons of history as we examine the events of today.
I want us to go into our next setting and to celebrate all that the Jewish community has given and done for Los Angeles, and especially for those that are particularly brave in these tough times with things going on in other parts of the world. So with that, I'm asking you to keep the faith and keep the faith. Thank you.
The Jewish LA Special Needs Trust serves as a legal force and brings peace of mind to families that have worries about what the future looks like. Let's give a big...
And lastly, you know, Mr. President, as well as colleagues, I do want to mention that the world has turned upside down on us in many ways. And alliances have been splintered or they have been broken. Historic alliances, those bonds that have been so tightly woven together over so many decades of just fighting in the trenches for human civil rights for all individuals, regardless of who you are and where you come from, regardless of which God you love and who you pray to, in regards to the color of your skin, and yes, regardless of your legal status, because we're all human beings that deserve dignity and respect. I remember when I had the opportunity to visit Yarvashem, and it was a very powerful experience for me, going and going near the Gaza Strip, you know, and going up north to the Golan Heights, just the southern part of Lebanon. And the world as we know it today again has turned upside down on all of us. Let me say this, is that it is not exclusive where you can have a profound policy difference on what happens in Gaza or in the West Bank. And if one doesn't like the current administration, Bibi Netanyahu, in the current cabinet, then that doesn't, you know, that's okay, because I know I have my perspective as well, too. Being and uplifting the Israeli community, which we have the second largest in the world right here in Los Angeles, and as one of my colleagues just mentioned, the third largest Jewish-American community and other nationalities from all over the world being here in the city of LA, you can find the policies abhorrent, but you can also uplift the people of Israel as well, too. They're not exclusive of each other. In fact, they're quite inclusive of each other. And when I heard too how a certain demographic may not even be aware of the Holocaust or deny the Holocaust altogether, shows you what can happen when narratives and algorithms hit through social media platforms and when people have terrible political agendas to divide communities against each other. We can actually come together and support one another. And more than ever, that's what we have to do, regardless of where one may be on the political perspective. But we have no place for antisemitism, because the Jewish-American community is part of the fabric of who we are in the great city of LA. Great folks like Meyer Luskin, you know, from Roosevelt High School, so I know personally, have a close relationship with, and many folks here as well, too. He is from the hardscrabble streets of Ball Heights, and he was a fighter himself, too, right there. So he stood up for himself. And that's why when we come together, we can do incredible things together. Facts matter, not visceral emotional truths driven by algorithms on social media platforms. And that's why we need to come together more than ever and be there for each other. And that's why I just want to celebrate my colleagues who are uplifting the contributions and the footprint of the Jewish-American community and also remembering what happened, remember what happened in World War II. And it can happen again and again and again. And you hear the echoes of it once again here. That's why we must stand together as one, one Los Angeles. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you all very, very much.
There's a reception in the rotunda until noon. We hope you'll come join us. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Just for the record, I'm Susie Baker today, but I'm just wondering where all the council members are. We don't have a quorum here.
So again, which items would you like to speak to?
Okay, just for the record, there's no quorum, so I'd like to speak on all items and general public comment. Mark Whis, where are your colleagues?
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
So why don't we start with item, what is this, 10? Graciously brought to us from the indicted current price and the currently presiding President Pro Tem MHD in the hizzy. This is regarding cannabis from the Department of Cannabis Regulation and Resolution authorized the DCR to accept a grant in the amount of $3 million. So we're accepting a grant. This is a cannabis equity grant to execute the standard of agreement, government's office, blah, blah, blah. Basically, what happened is weed became legalized and a bunch of wealthy, mostly white people were able to make lots of money off of weed and mostly non-white people who have been incarcerated for infractions involving marijuana are still dealing with the consequences. Not to mention, if you want to work for the city, you have to take a UA, and if you test positive for marijuana, you cannot work for the city, but the city loves to rake in that tax money from it, so that's pretty interesting. Other agenda items involve REAP, that's the Rent Escrow Account Program. I think everyone knows how I feel about the Rent Escrow Account Program. I don't have a song about it today like I have, like I did last time, but I will say that typically if you violate terms of a contract, that contract is broken, the other party or parties in the contract are no longer obligated to uphold their contract. But that's not how it works apparently. If you earn passive income from owning someone else's home, your contract is more like a suggestion, because if you violate your contract, the other party of the contract, AKA your tenant, they don't get a break, they don't get to break their contract and not pay you, they just have to put their money in a super secret account over there that you can't touch until you've met all of the obligations that you were supposed to have met already, and then you get all that money back. Now, I used to serve in restaurants. Could you imagine if you ordered a burger and a milkshake and some fries from me and I brought you a glass of water and then charged you for all of those things, and then you still had to pay me and I could just give you the milkshake and the fries and the burger whenever I felt like it and got to keep all that money? That's sort of what REAP feels like. But for workers, we're never expected to really get any recompense for things, but if you own something, you're really a citizen, your voice really matters, you're never at a loss, because all of you will send the police to protect them and protect their property. And Imelda and Tim are having a chat, so I don't think they can hear me. It looks like Unicef is on her phone, it looks like Monica's on her phone, and most of these seats are empty.
General public comment?
Let's go, girls. It was a big fight, it wasn't all right what the cops did at UCLA. A peaceful occupation was formed with dedication, then hundreds of arrests were made. The funny thing about Nithia Raman is when she pretends that she gives a fuck. Oh, 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 do you remember the month of December 2022? What did you do? Oh, 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 passed a resolution to define a word. Oh, 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 said if we compare what governments do there to the Nazis in Germany? Oh, 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 you say it's antisemitism. Man, fuck Zionism. Shout out smoking scan Brocklanders. I know we disagree on a lot of things, but I still love you all.
Thank you, council members that are here in the room. I wanted to bring to your attention that you don't see a whole packed house of neighborhood council leaders, even though the general manager is being chosen today. That's because none of us were ever notified. The neighborhood councils that were set up as part of the city charter to be able to weigh in on city issues were never notified that the general manager was going to be coming before the city council today. We also were not notified that it was going before the Neighborhoods Committee. This is an outrageous move. We are asking for a 30-day suspension, or extension, so that the neighborhood councils have a chance to weigh in. That is our job mandated by the city charter, and we are not allowed to participate in our own general manager that we have waited a year for. This is not okay, and you guys can make the difference. We just asked for an extension so that we have a chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
First of all, you didn't ask me what name I signed up for, Rabbi. So on consideration of all items and non-agenda public comment, I wish to speak on all fucking items and my non-agenda fucking public comment. So as you see on regarding cannabis, that measure is very good for our economy. And the reason why is because dumb council people, elected mayors in their local bullshit little cities that they criminalize corruption in, have figured a way to keep us white niggers from getting jobs selling dope, just like the dope that just left right now, Mr. [BLEEP]. But no offense, you know, the program's to assist California to sustain itself because your goddamn stupid governor has run this state into the ground in a deficit. And then your budget, same bullshit. Maybe this money can help the state of California maybe pay for some of our sewers that you guys haven't repaired in how many years and so forth. And maybe this resolution of $3 million instead of helping out the cannabis social equity, maybe it can help fucking replace our trash instead of having us dump it on the fucking street, idiot.
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item 10. Please move on to the other items.
Yeah, but I get three minutes and non-agenda public comments. I got two fucking more minutes, asshole.
Yes, so you can use your other two minutes on item seven, eight, or nine.
I can see the clock. Don't fucking interrupt me and remind me. I'm not stupid, you're stupid.
You need to get back on, you need to get back on topic, Mr. Herman.
I'm getting back to it, bro. All right, so, bro. Item eight, CD 11. Housing Department known as No Shit Housing, let alone Homeless Shelters, has done no good in the interest of the public. And the reason behind that was because criminal elements of our local government like Mr. O'Costa, their, you know, bucket head, doesn't understand that REAP is spelled rape. And when you rape us of our obligation to provide not just a console file, but to provide actual Kitty Hawk, meow, Kitty Walk, meow, avenue for a rent escrow account, again, it does not make no motherfucking sense to me. I mean, I'm just a poor dumb nigger trying to survive off of what I understand when I read the dumb shit off of 24005 S for Suck Dick 53, CD 11. So am I on topic, Circle K? Now I am. Now let me go to my non-agenda general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, the government has ruled that Brandonberg versus Ohio has never been hate speech. Rather, it just simply says, send the Jews back to Israel, bury the niggers, we intend to do our part, save America from Stormy Daniels who's fucking up the 45th president's life with their fucking lies, just like you lie, just like you say, oh, we don't have problems here in Los Angeles, fucking people are being attacked at the bus, fucking niggers are being attacked at the train, motherfuckers are being attacked all over Los Angeles, and you want to hold the Olympics? You got a goddamn shame of responsibilities and liabilities to attend to the people from Europe who are coming here to see that their lives are not going to be endangered by a dumb black motherfucker like me who you say have mental health, but no, all of you have mental health problems, and that's the reason why I wore this specific sign, pay attention.
Speaker, your time has expired. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items.
Okay, and public comment.
And you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, Mike Greenspan, the Jew who won't go back to Florida. Bob always talks about antisemitism. That's a Jew having to appease a false Catholic doctrine in a public school. Now, McOscar actually did something right. Item three. Yes.
So Speaker, item three is not open for public comment.
Oh, it's on the thing.
So the items that are open for public comment are items seven through 10. So you're welcome to use your time for those items. You can speak to anything in this city's subject matter.
All right, all right. Okay, Circle K, I got it, okay? Now, we, now that you hogged up my time, oink, oink.
Hold on, can you pause this time really quick? I'm sorry, Speaker. Mr. Spindler, please do not, Mr. Spindler, please do not disrupt the other speaker's public comment. Yes, you are. I can't hear what Mr. Greenspan is saying because you're having a loud conversation with the officers. You're more than welcome to talk to the sergeants, but if you'd like to do so, please do so in the back or keep your voice down. This is your first and only warning. Thank you. Sorry, please continue.
Okay, now we have the Rent Escrow Account Program, and if you're a bad landlord, they could by law put you in prison for being a slumlord, but you know and I know that doesn't happen. In fact, a book once talking about that said, pictured LA and Oakland as good examples where it does not happen. Slumlords just get away with anything. Now, even though that it does happen, or it should happen, slap, slap on the wrist, then they'll go back to doing the very same thing the minute you're not looking. Now let's talk about the pot shops. I gotta talk about them because we have pot shops everywhere. And you know what? There's somebody involved here with the city attorney's office, a colleague of fagetyfobble and Circle K, named Andre Quintero, and he's very, former political boss of El Monte, former mayor, this fat fuck wetback, and he's into the pot shops in the San Gabriel Valley, which means he's probably into the pot shops here.
Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, so this is your only warning? Please stick to the items.
Number 10, pot shops. I mean, they come here and advertise right here in downtown LA, they're pot shops. Well, you know, if they've got one pot shop, they've got another and another, they just maybe go under different names, but it's the same owner. Maybe they have a shell of an owner, but they don't have the actual owners. Kind of the way the Vegas thing goes. The mafia owns the club, but we put some schmo out there as a front as the owner. Well, that's how they operate the pot shops, and one of your own city attorneys has in on the pot shop business Andre Quintero, and I wanted to say it on the record so everybody knows about that fat fuck wetback political boss from El Monte that we hire. Now, the other thing, we have Jewish Heritage Month, and I really would like to talk about it. It was a good presentation. And always remember, Jesus wouldn't get Christmas dinner at Tim O'Quana Country Club. He's Jewish, fucking Baptist in the Klan.
General public comment?
Yes. Oh, that was something, that dog and pony show over there at that Catholic school on that 80-degree day where the police commission had their thing. Monica was there, and it was, she was dressed in black from head to foot to cover up how fat and ugly she is. And guess what? The next day, I showed up at the Budget Finance Committee chaired by Kaike Bob Blumenfeld, and guess what? She was wearing the same thing. You see, she skipped out on the meeting before the public spoke. After she blew her hot air, she skipped out with her deputy, and the next day, she must not have gone home, she took off in a city vehicle, and where did she go? Well, wherever hotel room she went to to spend the night with somebody other than her husband, she should have brought a change of clothes, because Wayne and I saw her in the same thing the next day in front of the committee meeting. Just thought everyone would like to know.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Item number, oh, you skip one, you fucking pricks, okay. Item number fucking three, we're down there. CD 15, the bucket head, the cost of the Rancho LPG facility. Fuck the LPG facility.
So Speaker, the item number three is not open for public comment.
But it says it there.
The only items open for public comment, as has been repeated multiple times, are items seven through 10. So please speak to the items or you can move to general public comment where you can speak to item three.
All right, CD 15, the fucking bucket head again. South Belaporte? They gotta give these fancy Italian names. I'll translate it. Shithole South, that's what that fucking place is. Fuck that place, REAP. You guys have the nerve to hold a landlord up in that shithole? Like, I mean, Unicef wouldn't send a dog over there for daycare. No, on number seven. And then we got [meow] the pussy on CD 11 at Kitty Hawk, [meow] on the Rent Escrow for the Kitty Hawk, [meow] and you know, [meow] from the REAP. Yes, finally, finally, the clutches of the ill-fated Tracy Park, Tracy Irene Beach. I think she was known one time. I keep telling Kevin to investigate, he looks at me like a mule. And I'm like, why? What the fuck is this woman doing? What the hell? Kitty Hawk, [meow]. Well, I'll tell you, like any other cat, any other pussy, it's just gonna goddamn cause you disgrace and fucking harm. That's what all pussies do to you. No, on the Kitty Hawk, fuck the Kitty Hawk. The number nine, we got Horse Face over there, the great one, KFC, Katie fucking cunt, on South Bedford Street. That's a pretty nice area. Why are they on the REAP? Let me see, what's going on here? Dear Wayne, they're holding me hostage? Okay, I get it, I get it. All right, so yes, we support number nine. Remember, everybody, you gotta do three things. You gotta pay off the building inspector, you gotta donate to the CD 5 Office Account, you got to pay off the fucking council members. Repeat after me. I have to pay off the council member. Thank you, Jesus Christ. You know, then I only have 10 items, you know? Now we get $3 million? Holy shit. I'll tell you right now, I'd blow Stormy Daniels for that amount, I'll tell you. Now I'll get to my general comment. God, Monica with the fucking flower. You've been wearing that ugly fucking flower for two days. It's bigger than your ass.
You gotta talk about issues, Mr. Spindler. This is not in the jurisdiction.
I'm talking about this disgusting outfit.
This is not in the jurisdiction of this council. This is your only warning?
I am the fashion police.
Speak to things within the jurisdiction of this body, or you will forfeit the rest of the speech. I believe this is his second warning, actually.
It is the presentation. We are at a business meeting, not a dance club. You have to have a certain look. People are laughing.
He remains off topic.
I'm doing you a favor.
We'll ask that he be excused from the chambers. We'll ask that he be excused from the chambers.
You have to, you have to listen to what I'm saying, they're laughing!
So, Mr. Spindler, per the chair, you forfeit your speaking time. Please vacate the podium so we can move on to the phone callers. All right, now we'll go to testimony from the telephones. And caller, before you begin, Mr. Spindler, you have been warned already, so please sit down quietly so we can continue with the public comment on the phones.
Good morning, council, and mainly, good morning, public.
Good morning, and which items would you like to speak to?
Items, actually, all items, because I've had to change with all the changes that have been going on. So anyway...
You have three minutes for the items, and that's items seven through 10, and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, item, okay, item seven through 10. In my opinion, I demand a no vote for item seven. That's the communication from the Los Angeles Housing Department. If indicted criminal Karen Price and unelected Heather Hutt and criminally insane sleazy Marquise Dawson are allowed to vote because they do not represent the public. In my opinion, I demand a no vote on item number nine, communication from the Los Angeles Housing Department, LHD, and resolution relative, relative to 929 South Bedford. If indicted criminal Karen Price, criminally insane sleazy Marquise Dawson, and unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote because they, again, do not represent the public, in my opinion. In my opinion, I also demand a no vote for item number 10, that's consideration of motion communication from the Department of Cannabis Regulation. If indicted Karen Price, unelected Heather Hutt, criminally insane sleazy Marquise Dawson are allowed to vote because they do not represent the general public. Okay, I guess I'm gonna go to, I guess I'm gonna go to, uh, public, oh yeah, public comment.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Public comment. All right, oh gosh. Uh, even subhuman lowlife Nuri Martinez said, "If you are indicted, you will be suspended from this council." And petty pink face Armenian dictator Paul Krikorian is even lower than Martinez. Excuse me. Okay? So, uh, basically, that's just to say that these items should not be recognized as far as something for the people. That's it.
From Klon, I'd just like to speak on general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
I'm amazed to hear Kevin DeLeon droning on about the multicultural tapestry of the city, antisemitism, not forgetting history. I want to talk about Kevin and ancient history from two years ago, when he was caught on tape being racist as fuck, insulting every demographic in the city, which included Kiran Ann Nuri as she talked about the Judeos, talking about the Jews, scheming, engaging in deep antisemitism. And you all sit there and clap on Kevin. We have the council president talking about the real members of the public at the top of the meeting. Uh, as if disruption invalidates your humanity, that's what Paul thinks of the hundreds of Angelinos who responded to the fed tape by pounding on your door. Paul hates those people, but is happy to cheer on Kevin's gaslighting now that he's welcomed back on the council. That kind of disdain that Paul has for normal people is why we sent those postcards to political donors.
Speaker, your time has expired, next caller.
Uh, public comment, you know, I want to thank Stacy and all the public commentators who come to city council to fight their issues. I may not agree with you, but I believe that you're there for the right reasons, the right reason, even to have...
Caller, general public comment is your opportunity to address this body, that is, the city council, not to address the members of the public, so...
I'm addressing the city council, sir, because this is a city council issue, sir. May I continue, sir?
You can continue to the extent that you're addressing this body and not members of the public.
I am addressing the thing, but public comment is part of the city council, and what I'm trying to say is that we have to be respectful of each other, and I would hope that people would be more respectful of the council people, even if they don't agree with them, and stop making themselves victims like a certain person who is now the victim after disgracing women, children, anybody that can walk, uh, but now who is a victim because of his perversion. Thank you, sir, for allowing me to address the city council. Am I okay with that, sir?
Your time has expired, next caller. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to? Yes, we can hear you.
I'd like to speak on general public in the key of D.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Because D equals Damon.
I'm city attorney. I got a big old head. My haircut looks like I just rolled out of bed.
Thank you. I'd like to draw, uh, council's attention to this Friday's Walk of Fame agenda item, number six, which is somehow still under consideration after this council essentially admitted in their proposed motion of council file 24-0489 that the city has been breaking the law when it comes to Walk of Fame star installations. It's been breaking the law in regards to section 62.105 of the LA Charter and section 28.04D of the municipal code at least, which requires the approval of the Board of Public Works before any A permit can be issued. The Board of Public Works and city council never approved of Donald Trump's name on the Walk of Fame before it was installed in 2007, and our city allowing this illegal honor of a white supremacist fascist on our sidewalk is an affront to decency, public duty, and intellectual honesty, and it's about time the city council does something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to the next caller, Mr. Greenspan, uh, you're displaying a sign that is not compliant with the rules of the city council. Uh, please put it down. Put it down, or you're in violation of the rules of this council, and you'll be removed. All right, let's go to the next caller, please.
We do not need more non-medical cannabis shops in CD 8 or CD 9. The people do not need to be sedated. They are awake and want a quality job, not three low-paying ones. And they want lower taxes. Our youth should not have to sell their bodies for any current price on the streets of Figueroa, the largest red light district in the nation, only to get harassed in Dawson, the Ferengi lapdog, or the failing stinking bass. What a disgrace for the council members of those districts. Only pimps will allow the red light district of Figueroa to continue. Let's not let the city go up in smoke and mirror the cesspool that is CD 8 and CD 9. Mayor Bass is a disgrace. Public comment. The state of the city is terrible and getting worse. The inside state program is a waste of taxpayer money. According to the council file 22-1545-S17, the majority of ghetto inside state programs are in areas that have the least amount of homeless. This is poor administration of public funds.
Speaker, your time has expired, next caller.
All right. Uh, that will close public comment on all agenda items and close general public comment. Okay, um, be, before we begin public comment, Mr. Spindler, please put that sign down. It's not compliant with our rules. Please put it down. I don't care if you're wearing it, or if you're sitting on it, or whatever, you cannot display it. Put it down.
Bababooey.
Good afternoon, so you have two minutes for the items.
Uh, bababooey, I want to speak on all items, uh, 33 and 34, Mr. Circle K. So, the appointment of Ms. Diaz to the Los Angeles Planning Commission, known as LACPC, or cunt, pussy cunts, recommendation is that we and the mayor appoint Ms. Diaz on a confirm appointee, but we don't know whether or not she's been involved in some of that circular shit on the computer known as Stormy Daniels, you know, that sexy stuff you older men like looking at called, uh, porno?
Please stick to the agenda.
Well, I'm verifying whether or not she's been on a site as porno, just like someone accused me of being on proton.me, dumbass. So, Juan Aquino, I see he got a F equals six, what a dumb fucker. Then we go to 34, neighborhoods, community enrichment, well, really, the social environment of our community is destroyed by your homeless encampments. People sleeping on the sidewalk and streets, nowhere friendly for pedestrians to cross or walk safely. That's the way the Olympics are gonna look. But I give you a solution. Take the motherfuckers and dump them other cities. That's how you solve the homeless problem. You've been doing it for more than 15 years, right, Circle K? You and your criminal enterprise like DWP? But going back to the Carmen Chang, is it Carmen Chang, or is it Connie Chong? Chin Chong Chang? I don't know. But I don't like wonton soup anymore ever since I found a roach in mine.
You're not speaking to the agenda item. Speak to the agenda item or sit down.
I'm talking about the manager for the neighborhood empowerment, how I plan to throw a neighborhood party on her behalf, but I don't want roach shit in it.
Okay, you're done. Okay, have a seat, have a seat.
Good afternoon, you have two minutes for the items.
Okay, so, let's see here. What, we have a worthless pile of shit for the LACPC, Los Angeles Cunt Property Commission, and of course, um, absolutely unfucking qualified, unconflicted bullshit, but it'll prove, it'll pass. Would you ever see Unisus object to one of these things? Would you ever see the Flower Girl object? How about noodle ramen on the basis that there's not enough affordable housing on any of these projects? No, you know, now John Lee what? John Lee would absolutely oppose this nomination unless there was 15 to 20% affordable housing on these projects, but he can't, because he has federal entanglements and ethics entanglements, so, you know, but I will count him as a voice of the people to vote. No on this shit. Let's give him a hand. Now, we get to the Department of Community Disenrichment and fucking Cunts for Neighborhood Empowerment. And what do we got here? Carmen Chang, who testified before Unisus Hernandez that she worked 10 whole years in the general council's office. That happens to conflict with her resume, doesn't it? And she says she has a national security clearance, parentheses expired with no dates on it. What does this mean? What is this grifter doing getting a $300,000 a year fucking job? I mean, look, I should get the job. Number one, I'm retarded. Number two, I have no friends. Number three, I'm not an asshole. And number four, I'll actually show up to work? Fuck the city council of Los Angeles!
Next speaker, your time has expired, next speaker. Good afternoon, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, 33 and 34.
So you have two minutes for the items.
All right, hello, council, how are you doing? Um, I, uh, don't know that much about who these people are, so, um, I thought that could be something that, uh, this body could look into providing more information to the public about transparency and whatnot. There was, uh, back when I went to college, there was an idea, I remember learning about, uh, the American legal system called due process, but also substantive due process, meaning that this has the appearance perhaps of being a bit of a rubber stamp or a formality, uh, whereas the reason that I'm personally kind of spending my time to come here is that I would like to actually be involved, or I'd like to see people be involved in the appointment, confirmation, whatever, rubber stamping. Uh, so it would be nice to have more information about who these people are, that way the comments that we're making, or Herman or Spindler making, are not just performance, but actually related to democracy and voting and those type of things, you know? The mayor, uh, is making the appointments, but, uh, if you can't get to the mayor, or the mayor's not here, the person's not here, maybe one of the two people should be here. That way, if someone like me comes down and wants to take our time, they could talk with me and say, "Hey, I'm getting on the LAPC, this is what we do. Uh, this is how you can be involved, this is how you can make your city more bright and shiny and productive." The municipal corporation of Los Angeles, let's, let's run the corporation like a tight ship. You've got the con, all right.
Good afternoon, you have two minutes for the items, please begin.
Mike Greenspan, I'm wish to speak on all of them, and remember, folks, during Jewish Heritage Month, this Jew won't go back to Florida, you anti-christ Catholics. Now, to the victor goes the spoils. As I've always said, if the other guy had been elected and not Karen Bass, RICKKK Caruso, he would put his people in. But Karen Bass gets to put hers. Now, I don't know why Juan Aquino, uh, resigned. I don't know if it's under a cloud, or personal or family things, and a lack of time to devote to the job, but if it was under questionable circumstances, we have a right to know also. As the late John Walsh always talked about, he has no problem with appointments, um, as long as they aren't like one appointee, I don't know which mayor, whether it was Han or, or Tony Villa, or Bradley, who had, an appointee had kiddie porn. That's not acceptable. So we definitely need to vet these appointees, whoever they are, wherever they come from. I mean, really vet them. Otherwise, we could have a repeat, and somebody else with kiddie porn. How disgusting! And that we would appoint people to these things that have these terrible things about them. Now, if Caruso had been elected, we'd get Englander, and Englander's this part-time pig that never had seen a bribe he didn't like. Money bribes, hotel room bribes, liquor bill bribes, pussy bribes. So, I'm very grateful that RICKKK Caruso, the choice of those racist white Republican pigs, is not mayor making fuck-up appointments. After all, Bass can do her own fuck-up appointments, and she does a great job of fuck-up appointments. Just look at Eduardo, all he does is jerk his dick.
Yes, my name is Lydia Grant. For identification purposes, I'm the president of the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council and a 25, 24-year neighborhood council veteran, also a former BONC commissioner. In all that time, I would never have believed that an appoint, that a general manager would be appointed to the department when not only did the department not notify us so the neighborhood councils could weigh in, but we weren't notified that it was going before neighborhoods nor today's meeting. We are asking for a 30-day extension so that the neighborhood councils have a right to weigh in. The neighborhood councils were set up by the city charter to be able to weigh in, and we couldn't even come today and ask for additional time because we haven't been able to agendize anything to be able to speak up. It's, it's wrong, and, and we're, again, asking for an extension. Give us the opportunity to weigh in, we would really appreciate it, thank you.
So, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the rule again for the regular meeting.
Blumenfeld, Deleon, Harustason, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McOsker, Padilla, Park, Price, Roman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky, 13 members in the court, Mr. President.
Also, El Comité de Desarrollo Maya, Felix, Saloj, El Comité de Desarrollo Maya, Aurelio, uh, Yuch, Corporativa El Migrante, AB, Solaj, El Comité de Desarrollo Maya, Edgar Cha from Maya Vision, uh, Angelina, Saloj, El Comité del Desarrollo, Necha, Shunkash, uh, Maya Vision, as well as Rosa Hernandez, El Comité Cultural. Uh, these are folks who are residents here of the city of LA, leaders, uh, in their own rights, respectively, of the Guatemalan community, and there's a couple things that I'd like to point out. El que vino también, el que canta de Sopa de Caracol, you know, he came too, you know?
Bienvenidos, Fiesta Broadway! Desde Honduras.
Hugo Nor, y gracias a todos ustedes desde Honduras para todo el mundo desde Los Ángeles. ¿Saben quién llegó? ¡Uepa! Si tú quieres bailar, Sopa de Caracol.
Hey! The Music Alpha!
From Nicaragua, from El Salvador, Pablo Montoya. He gave me that hat right there. Um, there's, uh, Hugo Soto Martinez with us right there, or someone who looks like him right there. I thought, you're right there. But anyways, it was a great event, uh, and I thank you much for that, right there.
Thank you. I think you rocked that hat, actually. May she rest in peace. I, I just want to state for the record that Mr. Spindler was disrupting that motion for adjournment. Uh, I would have excluded him had...